Thank you and good evening. If you please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, once again, thank you for joining us at our regular Board of Directors meeting this evening. To get started, we will adopt our agenda if we have a motion to do so. I move that we adopt the agenda for this evening. Second. Oh, by the way, Director Perkins is joining us via speakerphone. He is out of the state traveling with the robotics team from Union High School right now. So I'm not talking to myself over here. That's why you heard an additional voice.
I'm Mr. Gear Reaction Robotics Team from Union High School. They're a group of fourteen very excited kids. And it's great to be here and it's also great to be on the speakerphone.
Are they all with you, Rob?
Not right now. We're all kind of together in the food hall and I'm in a corner at me.
Okay, all right, and we won't disturb high schoolers with their food.
Not at all.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. I think even Rob tried to put that in there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Rob. All right, so our agenda's been adopted. So before we get started, we always like to recognize if there's any scouts in the audience. Is there any scouts that have joined us this evening? No? We have a big crowd, so I was just curious if there was any. Okay, then we will move forward with special recognition. We have a couple of them this evening. It is National Library Week, and for that, we are going to call up Teresa Orte. Teresa, come on up. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing great.
So Teresa's got several in the audience that we want to introduce, but first, we're gonna have Director Rogers read the proclamation.
Hi, this is Evergreen School District, number 114. Proclamation on National Library Week 2019. Says, "Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians feel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who for centuries have guided people to the best information resources. Librarians provide more than facts. They provide expertise and services that add meaning to those facts. Whereas librarians continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, especially as our society is at a critical juncture regarding the changing information landscape and the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new services that connect closely with patron's needs. Whereas libraries and librarians open a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programs, maker spaces, job-seeking..."
I think we lost Director Perkins.
...maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power grid. Whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries work to serve all community members, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, and the most vulnerable in our communities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Evergreen School District Board of Directors and the Evergreen School District Administration proclaim National Library Week April 7th through 13th, 2019. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and encourage and engage with your librarian. Because of you and our experts in the library, libraries equal strong communities."
Superintendent Romina, school board members, and guests, I accept the proclamation on behalf of the libraries and librarians. We are grateful for your continued support of the value that we provide in education.
Teresa, so you have some fellow librarians in the audience who understand that you want to have them come up and join you or read or show.
Yes, I do. In fact, what I'd really like is for everyone that works in a library, I know it's quite a few, but I'd really like to have everyone come up, librarians and assistants, and introduce yourself on the mic. That would be really nice if you would do that. Hannah, if you work in a library, come up.
Yeah, make sure you tell us what school that you belong to.
What school you're at.
I'm wearing my embersweetet.
I'm Georgia Shutt, and I work in the Mill Plain Elementary Library.
I'm Sam McDonald, and I work at Harmony Elementary.
I'm Cindy Smith, and I work at Columbia Valley Elementary.
I'm Beth Benning. I'm the teacher librarian at Hearthwood Elementary.
Scott Tomlinson, teacher librarian at Evergreen High School.
Kristy Peak, teacher librarian at Bill Plain Elementary.
Arm Star, and I work at the library at Silver Star.
Kelly Golden, I'm the librarian at Silver Star.
Paul Warner, I'm the teacher librarian at Shaheila Middle School.
Emily Crimmy, I work at Shaheila Middle School.
Michelle McRae, I'm the teacher librarian at image Elementary School.
June Cook, I'm at image Elementary.
Janet Cheryl, I'm at Pacific Middle School.
I'm Carrie Ostervie, I'm the librarian at Burnbridge Creek.
I'm Debbie Bray, and I'm the media assistant at Burnbridge Creek.
I'm Dee Hamburger, and I'm the teacher librarian at Endeavour Elementary.
I'm Julie Woods, and I'm the media assistant at Endeavour Elementary.
Sandy Brennison, Elkhorn Elementary, the assistant.
And thank you very much for recognizing the teacher librarians and the libraries in Evergreen School District.
Did you get a picture yet?
I'll try to do better. There's a lot of you to fit me with, the whole district. While they're getting their photo taken, you know, the whole idea of libraries has changed so much. Now they're media centers, or you know, there's different things depending on where you're at. You know, I just think about it in the olden days when I was a kid writing my stingray. I, you know, down to the library or being excited to get the hall pass to go down to the library at my school and getting the books. And, you know, of course, there weren't any computers then. And it was just always so exciting to get the next edition of, you know, Marie Ingalls Wild, or Will House on the Prairie, or Nancy Drew, or whatever. But I mean, it's just, and I know my own girls have a love of reading and always love getting that next, that next volume of whatever the current thing was. They were like in the Harry Potter generation. And it's, and they both love reading. And one of my girls now is a journalist, and so she loves to write. And, you know, reading is so important and all the other things now that a teacher librarian and those that work in our media centers bring to our students. You know, it's just expanded so much. So I really appreciate all that you do to open up the world for our students because it really does open up the world. And so it's an important function, and it's important to all of us, no matter what our age, it never goes less. Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you, thank you very much.
And I would just add, I personally appreciate the attendance at the forums. They've been well attended by a lot of folks advocating for the media's assistant position as well as just the libraries in general. And that's the whole purpose for the forums, is to try to take information and help us as we make decisions moving forward in the budget. So I just want to personally say thank you for the respect. Really, people have been very respectful at all of those and advocating appropriately. So thank you.
All right, great. Next, we are going to move on to another special recognition, which is Public School Volunteer Week. We have some special volunteers to recognize that are in our audience this evening. Carrie Servino, art discovery volunteer, he'll come forward. Elise Jamison Lyer, art discovery volunteer, Fisher's Landing Elementary School. Toby Lucius, Evergreen Citizens for Schools. And Patrick Connolly, Evergreen Citizens for Schools. If you'll all come forward. And while you're all gathering, Director Ronwald is going to read the special proclamation.
Whereas volunteer service is integral in addressing local and national issues and is an effective strategy to unite communities while meeting critical needs. And whereas the volunteer hours of Washingtonians demonstrate a strong and enduring commitment to public service and represent an astounding annual investment of approximately $5 billion. And whereas Washington is blessed with individuals of all ages who selflessly dedicate their time and energy to performing acts of goodwill and improving the quality of life for all people. And whereas it is important to honor those who give their time, talent, and resources for the betterment of their communities. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2019 as Volunteer Appreciation Day in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in recognizing and supporting those who volunteer and serve. Signed, this third day of April 2019, Governor Jay Inslee.
So Ginny's got a proclamation and some of the greeting cards for each of you as an appreciation. And I think for the art discovery volunteers, you'll see some of our students' artwork on the front of those cards because it's such an important program that you bring to our elementary schools in providing that. Because I don't think that our kids in elementary would have that art if there wasn't dedicated volunteers like yourselves. And then Toby and Patrick have been helping honor Evergreen Citizens for Schools, running our bond and levy campaigns the last several years, which have been successful, and we can't do it without that group. So we thank all of you. Would any of you like to say anything? Or which one of you guys would like the actual proclamation? You want to arm wrestle?
No, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Carrie?
Oh, behind you. The other group was a little large. Squeeze back with us.
Good?
Okay, thank you. I started my volunteer career, Ally is our discovery mom, and I always say, never mix kindergarteners with plaster of Paris. Well, like I said last year, when we had this proclamation read, I actually warned all the recipients because it was the year prior that I was up here getting the award, or you know, being recognized. And then I ran for school board, so be careful.
Not only, I mean, we recognize Art Discovery and the folks that are working on our Evergreen Citizens for Schools campaign, but there are huge amounts of volunteers throughout our district that, you know, we have lunch buddies and different people that come in and help our kids that we wanted to take mention of too, that we can't do it without our volunteers and the people that come in and help support our students.
Plus, it's fun to help in schools. It's cute. Most of them.
All right. Okay, so we will move forward to our Board Consent Agenda, which contains minutes from prior meetings that we've attended. Will entertain a motion?
I move for approval of the Board Consent Agenda.
Second. So move in second, and all in favor say aye.
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 All right. All right, Superintendent Consent Agenda. I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Second. Go in second, and all in favor say aye.
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 All right, excellent. Then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our public hearing. The public hearing is the intent to utilize the alternative subcontractor selection process for mechanical and electrical subcontractors on the Mountain View High School project. All right, so we will now open the public hearing to receive written and verbal comments regarding the justification for utilizing the alternative subcontractor selection process for the Mountain View High School replacement project. I'm gonna turn it over now to Mike for a briefing on the proposed action.
The Mountain View High School replacement project has a large mechanical and electrical component, and the district would like to consider an alternative selection process due to the critical importance of having the mechanical and electrical subcontractors involved early during the design phase to provide detailed construction scheduling, input into procedures and specifications, input into design, constructibility issues, space coordination, coordination of contract documents, determination of construction logistics and construction phasing, and detailed cost estimates. I recommend the board considers testimony in order to make a final determination to all interested parties.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we'll call for public testimony to provide an opportunity for any interested party to submit written and verbal comments regarding the justification for using this election process. The evaluation criteria waits for each criteria and protest procedures. So we will now invite anybody who would like to weigh in on this to come forward. I think there was a sign-up sheet.
It's here, and they can sign.
In as they go up, okay. So in order, if you'll go up, if you have testimony to make, you'll want to go to the sign-up sheet that's up in the corner. We'll need your name, email address, and you'll have three minutes
This might do this. Hi, I'm Carl Dunn with Prairie Electric. Prairie has wired over fifty school buildings for a number of different school districts with a number of different design teams and general contractors under various contracting methods. We're presently working on the Vancouver Public Schools-McLaughlin-Marshall project, which is based on the ECCM method. It's important to onboard an electrical subcontractor early in the process to provide design assistance services. The electrician, whether Prairie or another, brings a real-world, boots-on-the-ground perspective to the design process. We bring a team that is crafty and creative, able to find the most efficient way to arrange and perform work. Electrical contractors are best equipped to offer insightful constructibility review, scheduling input, and accurate budgeting. Involvement in the design process allows change or adaptation to begin early before all the other design elements are fixed and would be costly to reconfigure. When these issues are addressed, pre-construction, the owner gets the most out of their investment. Prairie Electric supports the approval of the alternative subcontractor selection ECCM process. We believe it's in the best interest of Evergreen Public Schools for the Mountain View High School replacement project.
Thank you.
Do you want this in writing?
Dr. Gray? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Stefan Erickson, and I work for JRT Mechanical in capacity of senior estimator. And like Carl Dunn, we're also working on the McLaughlin Middle School-Marshall Elementary School. And we've worked on many projects throughout the state of Oregon and Washington. Most of our employees live and work, prefer to live and prefer to work in Clark County, that's where most of us live. In all the schools that we've done, the majority of them have been hard to bid, plan, and spec. And we've seen a lot of challenges in those projects in terms of constructibility, schedules, cost overruns. And fairly recently, one not so far north of here, they had to make very significant ceiling adjustments. Lower their ceilings, put in soffits that they never had planned to do on the order of almost $300,000 in changes. In the MCCM process, we've had the fortune of working with Skanska on McLaughlin-Marshall, and all those issues are resolved early on. We're able to provide very realistic budgets so the school district knows what this project is gonna cost from the ones that do it on-site. And also provide assistance to the engineers. If we see the engineers start to specify something that's really driving the costs out of control, we're there to say, hey, this is, there's a cheaper way to do it, there's some cheaper materials to use that were performed just as well. And then logistics and phasing, all the things that were touched on earlier, we provide inputs for all of that throughout construction or throughout design. And then also early procurement of materials to further help them schedule. And also, all of the competition that we incur or help bring to the table, all those savings that we bring by having suppliers compete for the project, all go to the school district, not to the contractor. So for all those reasons, we, JRT strongly recommends the MCCM process because we've seen it work. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Scott Merle. I'm with Apollo Mechanical. I wanted to echo what the first two gentlemen said. I'm kind of a simple guy, so we've had multiple projects that have gone through the pre-construction. What we like about it, and what we think the benefit is to the actual owner of the school district, all the problems that usually shake themselves out during the course of construction if you go a normal plan and spec route. What we do under this program is we're trying to get all of those problems surfaced during the pre-construction phase. So anything that we can identify, whether it's equipment, routing, issues like that as a contractor with the rest of the team, that has a very low cost to solve during pre-construction. It's a meeting, we go through it, we come up with the best solution. If that same problem, say it was a routing problem, occurred during construction, now you've got, you know, twenty, forty people out on the job site looking up at a routing problem, it gets very costly with change orders, et cetera. We've had multiple projects this way. This is by far, in my opinion, the most cost-effective, best benefit to the owner, and Apollo Mechanical highly recommends this course of contracting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to give testimony? All right, well then, having heard everyone who chose to make comments, we are now closing the public hearing on the consideration of electrical contractor-construction manager and mechanical contractor-construction manager in returning to a regular board meeting. Sue Steinbrenner shall consider the written and verbal comments, receive and determine if using this alternative selection process is the best interest of the public. And then Sue shall issue a written final determination to all interested parties. And I'm assuming that's why we needed the email addresses, correct? All right, thank you. All right, next is matter reserved for board action, and it is discussion on our superintendent position. So I will open this up to the board for discussion. I know, maybe I can give a little bit of overview and kind of talk about what's transpired. The last, in February, February 25th, we named Mike Romano as our interim superintendent, and we have been working with him as interim superintendent the last couple of months. We've had several discussions with him as a board. The board has met and discussed the position and have given some consideration and thoughts around this. And so we just wanted to now open it up for some discussion as we kind of consider on what to do moving forward.
So some things that we've talked about is, you know, what are the options? You know, talking about, do we do a national search? And what are the cost ramifications? What are the ramifications for the timing of it, given where we are in the year? What are the ramifications to the equilibrium of the district and where we want to be? You know, we've had a lot happen in this year, you know, starting with how the year got started, the school year got started, and you know, we've had a lot of unsettled situations, and we want stability in the school district, so that's weighing heavy on our minds. And it's very, you know, we also are facing some, you know, pretty significant budget cuts that we want to be very thoughtful about that. And so thinking about that ramification and what, you know, do we really think that going for a national search and spending the kind of money on that, is that a prudent thing to do? You know, those are all the things that we have to consider as we make a very important decision. As a board, this is one of the biggest decisions that we make, is having the right leadership at the helm. So this is something that's weighed heavy on our minds and hearts, and we put a lot of thought into, you know, the direction we need to go. That gives you kind of an idea of where our heads have been.
And so you guys know I'm pretty new at seeing the school board. This is a little over a month now.
Oh, I do.
A month and three days. And so in that time, I have gotten to know Mike, and so far, I really like what I see and what I've seen. But like Dr. Bradford was talking about, the cost of a nationwide search, especially when we're in a year of budget cuts, can be really significant to our district. We can talk upwards of $50,000 to do a search for another superintendent. And then even not just putting costs aside, I think about things like, what are we gonna get out of a nationwide search? And do we actually want to do that? Because we don't necessarily know what we're going to get in the person. Because we don't necessarily know what we're going to get in the person that we might find from somewhere else who might be great, or who could be someone who doesn't know us, who doesn't know our culture, who doesn't know our community. And, you know, Mike Marino has been here I think 19 years, and has shown serious commitment to our community and to us. I think the way that you've handled our recent cuts has been extraordinary, and the way you've gone out to our communities, that really impressed me. And I really like the openness that you've shown and trying to get our community to give us feedback and to be involved. And if you bring that to a superintendent position, then that's what I want to see, is that's what I want. Because my job is, you know, all of our jobs as elected officials, is to do what those who elected us, who chose us, want us to do. And when we select you, you know, we want transparency, and we want to learn as much as we can from you, so that we can all make the best decisions for our school district, for the children, so that we can do the best jobs we can do with the knowledge that we have, and within the confines of unfortunately our budget. And so for a lot of, you know, the reasons that we've discussed, I think that it would be foolish of us to pass up this awesome person that we have sitting next to me for our superintendent.
Jimmy?
So in the beginning, I was pretty gun-shy. I would say that, you know, there was a lot of things that have happened over the past couple of months that have, you know, just really kind of made you think, or made me think. And there's, you know, we had Mike by our side, you know, the entire time, before anything happened, before budget cuts, he's always, you know, he's always with us. But in the beginning, I wanted to pause. I wanted, and I kind of, you know, it wasn't maybe what everybody wanted to hear, but I didn't want to jump into something and be reactive and not proactive in knowing exactly what we were looking for, what we wanted, and which direction we were going to go. I didn't want to create another situation where, you know, we had mud on our face, so to speak. So I asked just for a little bit of time before we even came and brought this and had a discussion about where we were going, because I hadn't really ever seen Mike lead. And I didn't know, you know, a lot of people can rise to the occasion when we're in a stressed situation, and the budget cuts is a stressed situation. These feelings had nothing to do with Mike himself. It was, I wanted to make sure that I was 100% certain when I made a recommendation or had a discussion with everybody. After the budget forums and going out to the community and watching Mike interact with everybody, stepping up in front of everyone and saying, we don't have all the answers right now, we're out here asking for everybody's input. And he is very open when he doesn't know something and is very willing to admit that and find the answers. And that takes a lot. But getting to watch him when he wasn't basically on display for us, you know, even in an interview or anything like that, he was out interacting with the people, with the community. I was able to put any reservations I had aside, and, you know, and I am also in favor of making this permanent for Mike, so.
To add to this, going through a change, especially one that happens when it's not expected, can be very challenging for a system, especially a system of the size that we have. And to lead a district of this size is not easy. Contrary to what many people think, being superintendent is a very difficult job, because it's, you have to be able to represent to the community who we are as a district. You have to be, you know, able to handle the financial resources and manage the resources of a district. You have to have relationships with not only the community, but internally. You have a lot of hats that you have to wear, and you have to balance. And then you have to work with a board who are elected and can change every four years. It's not an easy job to have, and it can be very interesting and stressful. And what has been nice to see with Mike, as we've gone through this, is his willingness to be transparent, as Rachel was talking about, about what's going on. People have been writing to the board and to Mike about staff recommendations for how to, where we could make cuts, things that don't do this, but you could possibly do this. And what I think has been really interesting is Mike's willingness to have people come in, because he has more questions for people that are coming up with these ideas, so come in and I'll talk, and let's talk, help me understand more about what you're talking about. And because he sees that the people in the buildings, teaching our students, have answers that we need to have, and his willingness to get that input from anybody and everybody within the system, to come to the best thinking, to me, is the sign of a good leader. It's not that I'm at the top and I know everything, it's I'm here and we're all working together. And that's something that we said, is when we said we're hitting the reset button, is that we're in this together. He actually puts it into play and did it right away. And that, to me, is a sign of a good leader. And it's not about what I've done, it's not about I know, have all the answers, it's not about me, me, me. It's about us and how we're going to get through this. And that, to me, was what moved me to feel like Mike's the person for this job. And we're all in this together, and I think that I feel comfortable that we have the right person here. And the other thing I love about Mike is that Mike loves our district. He cares about this district and about our kids and what's happening here. And he has common sense, and I kind of like somebody who has common sense. You know, he's not about facts, he's not, you know, it's like, what do we do to teach our kids what they need to know? He's not looking to take us off in some other, you know, crazy direction. It's just, we've got to do right by our students and our staff, and he does care. And I think that's huge. And he knows who we are as a community. He's lived in this, he's grown up in this community, he's worked in this community his whole life. I mean, he is about who we are, and I think that's what we need.
And, I mean, he's been here for 19 years, in the most intimate parts of the district. I mean, our finances, it's, our budget is this thick. It's, I've read it. Yeah, that wasn't it. Great moment. But, uh, anyways, I digress. He knows everything. He has been with Evergreen through all its ups and downs, and I don't think we could ever find someone who knows so much, so much history, so much detail. And one of the biggest things that we heard with our former superintendent was that he wasn't a teacher. And so that was definitely, you know, something that was also thought about, is, you know, Mike has admittedly, or, you know, he has not been a teacher, he's not been in the classrooms. But that is, there's more about Mike, because he goes in the classrooms, he gets on the floor, he interacts with the kids. We've watched him with students. We've watched him out in the community, we've watched him coaching. You know, he's very into our district and loves our district as any of us. And not always can we have a leader that has followed the path. And I think that Mike knows all of the parts. And he comes from a family of teachers. He has been, he was raised in schools, it's been his entire life.
And I have to just say, one of the best things about Mike is what he just did while you were talking, is that he wrote me a little note that says, I don't know everything. But that's the best thing, is that he's willing to admit that he doesn't know everything.
You get called that way.
But he's willing to admit that he doesn't know everything, and that's what we don't need, is someone who thinks they know everything, who really doesn't know everything, and isn't willing to take input and, you know, and ask for help, and admit when they don't know something, and think that they know how to do everything without guidance.
And he's also not going to tell our teachers that he knows better than they do.
Exactly.
Because he doesn't know how to.
Because he knows, and he knows better.
Coming from a family of teachers.
Rob?
Oh, I have a comment, too.
I think her as much, go ahead.
Did you hear me all right then?
Yes.
Can you guys hear him?
I've known Mike in the professional capacity since the first budget cuts meeting. I want to say that was 11 years ago, right?
Yeah, I think that's right.
And so I was expecting that same kind of management and approach that he provided to the citizen committees, and how disruptive things have helped it put it all together. But I was really impressed during that first month, how we arranged the community forums and got them quickly set up, and put them into a format where we could actually hear what I said the first time, the full content of their minds and hearts about these ideas, all of which were heartbreaking to me. So, and we know Mike, you all have said it, we know he's got a great humility and humor connected to a very difficult job now. And I'm satisfied watching in the last week, during those forums and during the events like Crystal Forte Day and a couple of the other public things, and the way that he's presenting himself to the press, especially on the TV station, you know, I think we have someone who is confident and capable of the job. And I definitely support the idea of appointing him as superintendent from this point forward, or however we're going to do it.
All right, thanks, Rob. I just wanted to add a couple of things. For me, I think leadership is about building the kind of culture that you want, and having those relationships with people. And I think that some of those are the two of the most important things. And I believe that Mike builds the kind of culture and has the relationships with people that people want to be part of. And we're a huge district. We've got lots of employees, we have lots of students, and a big community. And I think that Mike is the perfect person to lead our district and our employees and the people in this community, because he believes in building such a strong culture and building relationships with everyone, not just about, you know, the people that are worked right under him, but all the people in the buildings. And he builds such good relationships, one of the things that we didn't even talk about, but he has such a strong reputation, because he's built great relationships with all of our people in Olympia, all of the legislative people. And not to mention, I think that it's been said several times before, but I'll say it, that he's probably one of the best in state when it comes to financials, correct?
I think, yeah. I appreciate that comment.
Over the years, I know that when this district has wanted to come up with like the All-Day K, and it was during the time when we were doing budget cuts, Mike figured out a way, because he knew it was important to our students, he knew it was important for our kids to get into the classroom and have All-Day K experience. We were one of the first districts to do it, because he figured out a way to come up with the finances. It wasn't necessarily part of the, you know, budget in his capacity and his duties, but he knew it was an important mission, and he figured out a way to make it happen for our kids. And that's just one example of the things that he's done that's been important, when it's becoming a big Evergreen initiative, that he's always found that way, and I know that will continue if he's in that position. So, do we have any other discussion? Are we ready to make action?
Well, I have a motion.
Okay.
I would move the board to offer Mike Marino the position of superintendent of Evergreen Public Schools, conditioned on final approval of the board of a written contract. And I would include in that motion that the board president, Bo Nekra, and vice president, Bradford, work with Mr. Marino to develop a written contract, and include along with that a supplemental contract to pay him for the work he's done as superintendent, from when he started through the end of this term, June 30th.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Rob, you have anything? Any further discussion?
No, we've said it all, I think.
Okay, then, it's been moved and seconded, there's no further discussion, then we will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
I would milk a standing ovation from the one in the back.
So, this is kind of great how the agenda was, because next is the superintendent report, so. We're going to turn it over to Superintendent Marino to give us an update and maybe say a few words.
Yeah, at first, I would say thank you, I appreciate it. I do, I really appreciate it. I mean, I think that the five of you, which some of you I've worked with for quite some time, I think of Joan Skelton, another board member that we had, and Todd, who just stepped down recently. We, you know, we've had so many, Holly Williams is another one I was thinking of that we've worked with over the years. I've been lucky, in whatever capacity I've worked in, to work with a number of wonderful board members, and I'm excited to continue doing that. I apologize to the room to have to, I know a lot of times when they do the proclamations, people get out when they can. The teacher libraries and media assistants, you didn't take that opportunity, I'm sorry you had to sit and listen through that whole thing. I would also say, I mean, it's a great honor for me. I want to say thanks to John Dieter, who's been a great mentor to me for years. Marsha Fromhold is another one that's been a great mentor. She hired me in the district in 2000. Thank my family for the support that they give me at home and dealing with me on a daily basis. And you mentioned our family, I do come from a family of teachers. My dad was a teacher, my mom worked, they both taught at Deaf School. So I have grown up around schools my whole life. My brother actually is superintendent at the ESD. I've got a sister that teaches or taught at Fort Vancouver for years, she's now their athletic coordinator, and a sister that is an interpreter at Evergreen High School. So, and another one that has always been the black sheep that doesn't have anything to do with education, so I acknowledge her as well. So, you know, and just over the years, all the great people that we worked, I mean, what you're saying is, it is a great school district, and we have had some difficulties over the last several months, but it's a great school district. And the fact is that the reset allows us to listen to the people that work in the district. There isn't anybody that has every answer, but collectively, we do have all the answers, and then we just need to sift through that and make the right recommendations. So from my perspective, I'm very thankful to all of you, and I promise that I will work hard every day, and we'll get better every day. So, that's good enough. I would say with respect to the, my update would just primarily be, you know, since we met last, we did have spring break, hopefully, everybody had a good opportunity to kind of unwind just a touch and refocus. I have I have, actually, I mentioned my family at home that deals with me. I have four children, one that works in the school district as a ELL parent at one of our elementary schools. And I saw her over the weekend and she was telling me that she's just wiped out already and we still have two months. So I imagine if she's saying that, I guarantee that everybody sitting in this room is feeling the same way. So, we will persevere and we will work hard. We will get through it. But hopefully that helped us rejuvenate ourselves a little bit. What we're doing is just continuing. You know, we finished the last forum. Now what we're doing internally is kind of sifting through the things that we heard and trying to determine if we have the ability to add back. What are those things and what is the smartest way to do that? And we've already talked about the March, excuse me, May 20th and 30th forums that we will have because I think it's important if you're going to ask people what their thoughts are, that you listen to them and you then respond to that. And so I think that's what we will do in terms of refocusing on where we're at in the next few weeks before we go back out again, May 20th, and start talking about some of the resolutions to some of the conversations we've had. The legislative session is ongoing. I think they've got, today's the 16th, so they have 12 more days until they complete, if they complete on time. So we're hoping that they do and we're working with them to hopefully generate a little bit more money for us as we deal with the budget forum. So we've just been very engaged with those things and continue to do that. I would also mention my daughter, Megan, works in, it's her birthday today too. So happy birthday to my daughter, Megan. That's all I have.
Hey, Megan.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is monitoring district operations, operational expectation OE9, communicating with the public. Members of the board have received the monitoring report for operational expectation OE9. I'm going to go ahead and call on Mike for any updates to this.
I think we're going to have Gail come up.
Thank you, Victoria. Stretching out your update, I was able to send the press release before you called me in. Last month during the workshop, we presented the operational expectations monitoring report OE9, communicating with the public, interpretation and compliance, provided lots of documentation for all of the sections and we did not receive any additional comments or clarifications from you at that point. And since that point as well, haven't had any further questions. So, not seeing any other questions. At this time, I'd recommend the board accepts the monitoring report for operational expectation OE9, communicating with the public as presented for first reading as in compliance and move it forward for a second reading.
Thank you. All right, this time we will call for audience questions or comments regarding to this report. All right, seeing none, we will call for a motion from the board.
I recommend the board accepts the monitoring report for, excuse me, operational expectations OE9, communicating with the public as presented for first reading as in compliance and move it forward for a second reading.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We'll go ahead and open it up for the board to ask questions. Rob, do you have something?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to comment and thank Gail for presenting the report and workshop last week and really detailing both, all of the good work that they've been doing, communicating with the community and arranging for the relationship events like Crystal Forte Day and the community tours and so forth. But also I'm really thankful for the discussion we had around the difficulty that we're all having adapting to pretty much a new kind of new medium, which I think happens every year or so, and how the landscape is getting. She gave a clear report of that and made, had me, Rob, you were better understanding the difficulty of it and all the variables involved. So, thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Rob.
Any other?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Rob. All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
My only comment is just, this has always been one of the hardest areas. You know, communication is slippery. You put out information and you hope that you reach people and that they get the information and it just is challenging to get everything out the way you want it. And so it's just going to always be something that we have to keep working at and keep finding ways. So I appreciate all that you've done and all that you will continue to do, so.
Yeah, and one of the ways is the board has had a communication committee too to try to make sure that we're communicating and because Victoria mentioned, it's hard because if you do it in writing or email, social media, we have to make sure that we're reaching out to everybody, everyone that lives in the district and that they're getting that information. And so it's something that we're always working on. But we have seen significant increases in the people that use our touchpoints through social media. So keep up the good work, Gail. All right, any other questions? All right, so we will now take a vote to accept the monitoring report for OE9, communicating with the public as presented for a first reading and move it forward to a second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. So we'll bring that to a second reading on our next meeting, which is May 14th, which is a long ways away. But I'm sure we'll be here before we know it.
I'm sure we'll see you before then, too.
I'm sure we will. All right, so next is the good news report. So Gail just stayed up on the podium.
Decided to hang out. So, this is one of the ways we communicate with public, so the publishing, gathering and publishing that we have in the district. So first of all, I believe we haven't had a board meeting since the gala.
We have not.
Okay, good. Yeah, my, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we did. Yes, we did.
Well, one of the highlights always is the dessert dash. So our partners, ChartBells, took on the challenge of baking, cooking, assembling a variety of lovely desserts. And I see Chef Aaron back there, who made all sorts of delicacies along with several of his other coworkers. And so they donated that and the dessert dash brought in over $8,500 for the foundation. So we're appreciative of your efforts, appreciative of the lovely desserts and glad that it raised significant money for us. Heritage High School's speech and debate team has earned the title of number two in four A schools in the state. And so two students will be going on to Nationals in Dallas in June. Ashley Lynn, a student at Union High School, has been accepted into the very prestigious New York Academy of Sciences Global Science Technology Engineering and Math 1,000 girls. The 1,000 Girls Future Mentoring Program assigns her a mentor, so she will be monitored during her coursework and it emphasizes college readiness, leadership, communications, and critical thinking. Rachel Swanson, who is the founder of the New Hope Children's Center in Kenya, visited Rebecca Hutchinson's third grade class at Image Elementary and she presented about her center and has also arranged to have each child become a pen pal with a child from their center. She also brought wooden spoons that were made by a neighboring tribe there in Kenya. During spring break, the Harmony Elementary students decided not to miss out on their monthly reading with the Quarry Senior Living. So on spring break, a dedicated group of students and parents, PTA volunteers, took part in the Harmony Helping Hands Project and they read each month to residents of the Quarry. And if you haven't had a chance to see it on Facebook, the pictures are really special and you can tell how much it means to the residents as well as how much it means to the students. Logitech held a children's shoe drive and collected 59 pairs of shoes and donated it to the community, family and community resource centers. One of their employees, Jennifer Hummel, helped organize and collect the donations on behalf of Logitech for our schools. And then, you're right, we have had a meeting just recently because Mike was able to announce and preview that one of our employees was named our regional classified employee of the year, Marie Stalsberg from Mountain View. So now we can preview it. He gave us the sneak peek. Marie runs the Fender Academy program at Mountain View. She works at at-risk students, with at-risk students to help them recover credits and graduate on time. And we're delighted that she'll be traveling up to Olympia as one of the nine regional award winners. And we, fingers crossed, that we will have another state winner, because Marie does exactly those words. And that's our good news.
Great. Thank you, Gail. All right, next is the budget update. So we're going to turn this over to Superintendent Morlino.
Yes. So what I would say with respect to the budget update, first thing is typically in one of the meetings, one month every, one meeting every month, we not only, I'll do my presentation, but there's also monthly reports that show my fund, where we're at financially. You haven't seen that for a couple of months because the county is going through a upgrade of their system and through that process, they're not on the other side of it yet. So when we get back together in May, you'll start seeing those again. It's been a little bit of a, these conversions are always difficult. We'll go through a conversion at some point in the next year, the two years for the student and fiscal system. So I understand the difficulties that the county's dealing with, but you'll see those next month. We've had enrollment for April was tracked about where we thought it would be actually increased just a touch more than what we had expected. The biggest thing financially has been when the reset occurred, the effort to try to kind of freeze spending as much as possible, the idea of hoping to increase our, any balance this year, that that could potentially help us going into next year. And I would say that in the last, I guess it's been almost eight weeks now since, maybe six or seven, I don't know what it is, something like that. We, the estimates, you know, we've had some good news that we talked earlier about the transportation dollars coming through for the first time ever for us. But I do think that the efforts that we've made to kind of try to restrict spending are helping as well. So I think that at this point in time where I thought our fund balance might go down a few million this year, I think we're probably going to be fairly close to break even, which is a positive as it helps us look at next year's budget. Each month I update that, so here we are, almost to the end of April again. We'll update that again. I'm feeling good about where we're at this year. I'm feeling hopeful with respect to the legislature and what we might be able to do with new dollars coming in to help us with the situation. And I mentioned earlier that we'll be continuing to work on the budget and we, you'll hear a lot more on the budget. So that's what I've got for tonight.
So you're not going to be announcing any increase in our, in the deficit?
For, no. I think that the approach that the district took, I mentioned, one of the people I mentioned was John Dieter. The approach that the district took when Rob was a member of the committee, our idea has always been that we should produce a list that's larger than what we think it needs to be and help us prioritize as we come down. It's unfortunate to even have to create a list, but one of the things about creating a list is receiving feedback and helping us make good decisions with respect to, well, maybe you didn't think about this or maybe you didn't think about that. And so our situation will not get worse. It should only get better. And it's really something that we did in 910, it's something we did in 1112, and it really, I think, has been the right approach all along. So I think that we had thought that the worst case might be 18 million and then we, you know, 15 to 18 million. I really feel like it's going to get better than that, but I don't really want to say. Once you say something.
I know.
That's why it's better to say big and come down, in my opinion.
I agree.
And when we have better and more clear information when the legislature's done, then we'll continue to talk about it.
And we have those dates set too in May that hopefully we'll have more information.
Yeah, I think May 20th is at Heritage High School at the same time, I would imagine, 6 o'clock. And on May 30th, at Mountain View High School at 6 o'clock. And that will be the last, I mean, I think we also mentioned in all the forums that the budget isn't actually adopted until August. So we have plenty of time. The goal is to have as many conversations about the situation, listen to folks, make good recommendations, that when we do adopt the budget in August, nobody comes to the
Everybody knows.
Other than us.
But everyone's welcome.
Everybody knows. Everybody's welcome to come to every one of these, but you've had a lot of opportunities to share your opinions and we've listened and we responded. That's what I mean by that.
Yes.
We want people to come to all of our meetings.
Because they're all so very exciting.
They are very exciting. One of them, we might even just read the budget if you'd like to do it.
I would, yeah, I have it. While at Wildways, it's for my son's birthday last year. All right, thanks, Mike. All right, board comments. Any comments by the board? I know we are coming off of the week of spring break, so we haven't probably been up to a lot since our last meeting, but I know there's a lot coming up.
I know that some of us, I'm not sure who all is going to be participating in the Wizards game.
Yep.
Yes, we will be.
You've got to pull my shirt order for me.
I will be a cheerleader.
You're going to be a cheerleader. So the Wizards will be playing, are we at Union?
Yeah.
Union High School on May 2nd. So that should be fun, watching us from around, looking like we don't know what we're doing. That's what it was last year. Also, I guess another big thing is that York is having their annual color run that is on, I just wrote that down, but now I can't remember. I can't remember when it is. I'll have to look it up.
Are you running?
I haven't really decided yet. Better volunteering. But that's always a lot of fun.
We have the groundbreaking.
Yes.
For Sifton. And I think that's their big anniversary.
It's next week.
Their 60th anniversary.
All in the same day. Groundbreaking in the morning and the anniversary in the evening. The York Color Run's on the 4th of May. Next Thursday evening, we're actually hosting at Heritage High School our community salutes for all of the high school seniors that are going into the military, all of the different branches. And so we're going to, and it's for all of the high school seniors throughout Clark County. We, every other year, we alternate on hosting it with Vancouver Public Schools and this year, we're hosting it at Heritage High School. I think it starts at 6:30, is that correct?
6:30 to 8.
It's a really nice event, if you can make it out to that, so.
I'm going to be coming to that, but I'm going to be just squeaking in because I'll be going to the First Citizen for Ed Barnes' reception, which goes until 6:00. So I'm going to be starting over, but I'll be, I'll be there.
It's a good one. And on the 30th, we have the CTE students showcase their heritage. The calendars are full.
There's a lot going on this time of year with all of like presentations at schools. It's a bunch of parade. All of that's happening before our next school board meeting. So we'll have a lot to report on when we come back.
I'm really looking forward to all those things. I've been, the last two weeks, three weeks, however long it's been, I've been mostly, what time spent at the schools has been with the legislative effort and I guess a little too early to say, yes, we have some things that are good for schools, but there's a lot more optimism in my heart about things now that House Bill 5099 has passed the Senate and just concurrents in a governor's signature to take care of some graduation requirements. Really, really thankful for all the hard work that our county delegation has put in to getting that kind of good result that far. And I And I feel a lot of optimism that it'll actually come to pass this year. Other than that, yeah, it's gonna be a busy month, and I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking.
All right, great.
And the children's parade, I really love the children's parade.
I think you said one time it was your favorite, favorite thing.
That and graduations and for table.
And that's all around the horizon. Okay, anything else? Just not, we'll go ahead and move on to future agenda items. Is there any items that we wanna bring forth? I know that we've been doing some, talking about things we wanna bring forth to our summer planning meetings, and so, if there are things that we wanna bring up for those, maybe just kind of bring forward, or start thinking about some of the agenda items we wanna start talking about for our summer planning and then other meetings moving forward. Because that's kind of where we do our groundwork and our planning for the board's calendar plan for the next year. Okay, at this time, we'll have citizen comments if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board. If you do, we have a sign-up sheet. If you would come up and give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, and it cannot be personnel or legal in your. Kristi Peak, come on up, Kristi.
Do I need to state my name and address?
Please.
Kristi Peak, 1-860-2, Southeast 23rd Circle, Vancouver, Washington, 98683. And I'm gonna be reading a statement on behalf of the Evergreen Education Association, which passed unanimously in last night's council meeting. While it is appreciated that the school district and board have made themselves available for feedback through the district listening sessions, we're concerned that these comments are only being chronicled without intention of being implemented. Former Vice President Joe Biden has famously quoted his father saying, "Don't tell me your values, show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." Budgets are value statements, a set of priorities. WA supports districts keeping a reserve of 3% to 5% and having them fund balance. We understand that this is good fiscal policy. However, we still see a $4 to $5 million beyond this amount in reserves that should be accessed to address the concerns brought up at the listening sessions. Perhaps this is happening, perhaps this is in process. We maintain that no cuts that harm the students in our classes be made before all the lesser priorities are considered. We do not value one member's role over another in making these decisions. We are a union, and we want every member to be working in the role that they are most uniquely qualified to fill to best meet the needs of our students. We certainly agree that legislators need to further consider the options that we provide to students above and beyond just a basic education. We do not teach in prototypical schools, and we do not treat our, our students as prototypical when providing differentiated instruction. Our district does not hire prototypical educators. When we spend our time to attend forums for the district, they expect to be heard. We look forward to seeing that these listening sessions were more than an opportunity to vent.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Sarah Douglas?
Hello, I'm Sarah Douglas, 1910 Northwest 100 Main Street, Vancouver, Washington, 98685. I'm a teacher at Marion Elementary and reading specialist. After talking with a lot of my staff and a lot of my friends who are teachers, particularly in primary, we would like to emphasize for your consideration a possible budget cut in the iReady computer program. And this is the reasons that through brainstorming with multiple colleagues, the concerns we have about iReady and why we would be happy to see it go. First, iReady is developmentally inappropriate at younger grades, particularly K through 2. Students do not always understand what the computer is asking them to do and thus answer incorrectly. Takes time away from instruction, sometimes taking hours to administer, especially in primary grade levels where devices must be shared. Kinders and first grade students are learning to navigate charts and screen windows. Clicking out of screens is one example of where it takes an incredible amount of time to get them through a diagnostic or lesson. Your experience getting Rob set up on the phone and beginning to imagine doing that with 20 kindergarteners who don't know their letters and are looking at a keyboard filled with letters. Students who are second language often struggle with understanding the task and/or don't have the vocabulary knowledge to answer correctly, even if they understand what the task is. So, for example, if they pick a picture that starts with a T sound, that's the task they're being asked to do. They understand which word has the T sound, but they don't know which picture is the word that has that, that word that starts with T. Teachers are better at personalizing learning for students rather than iReady computer programming. Secondly, iReady is a poor assessment for guiding quality instruction and measuring student growth. The new reading curriculum which is being adopted by the district is Fountas and Pennell. Authentic assessments used as diagnostic tools in the system rely on actually listening to students read a text and take a record of their actual reading behavior. Similar ongoing assessments help guide instruction for teachers. In iReady, you don't listen to your students read as part of the diagnostic. So, we question how compatible, compatible iReady is to the newly adopted Fountas and Pennell system. iReady hides student thinking, something that's very important to be able to see when we're trying to guide best instructional practices for our students. As part of the diagnostic, iReady asks students questions that are often too difficult, which sometimes causes extreme anxiety in children and makes them give up. The diagnostic is long, and many teachers find students with low stamina get frustrated and give up, or students that find it too easy get frustrated and give up, press random keys to get answers in the end, which skews the results. I've spoken with teachers who have fluent readers or above-grade level students and are frustrated that the diagnostic places them way too low. iReady is supposed to be a tool to help place students in reading groups and identify them for intervention. In my own experience, in the experience my sons have had, and in the experience of a lot of the reading specialists I've worked with, we've found that it's not a very accurate way to identify students for intervention groups. Many teachers give iReady because they are expected to, but find themselves giving other assessments that are more valuable, such as doing running records and having students actually read text to guide their, to use as a diagnostic tool and to guide their, their instruction. And finally, this came especially from older grade level teachers. They find it has not been a time saver for lessons as originally planned. One commented it was mediocre at best, the lessons that they get from iReady and the amount of time to appropriate match a good lesson for what students need takes as much time as writing your own lesson. So, it's not really a time save or a money saver for the district. Finally, students are often placed way too low on the diagnostic, find lessons boring, and rush through lessons and don't take the lesson seriously. So, we question what the academic benefit is, so. So, thank you for listening, and I urge you to consider that as an option for cutting the budget.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next, Robert Cozy. Come on up, Robert.
Robert Cozy, 13210 Southeast 7th Street, Q77, Vancouver, Washington, 98683. Good evening. First, let me say I appreciate that everything all of you do for Evergreen School District and the tense situation we are currently in with budget reductions. I grew up in the district, graduated from Mountain View High School, have a mother who has spent 20 years as a parent educator in Evergreen. My family lives in the district, I teach in the district. When it came time for my choice as an educator of where I wanted to work, there was no question for me that Evergreen was my home. Evergreen School District has a reputation for producing high-quality students with world-class teachers. It is where I have chosen to make my home, it is where I will send my daughter to school. I share this because I want to implore you in your quest to reduce the budget to do so appropriately. We, as a district, talk a lot about equity in education for our students. As our student population has grown more diverse and unique, we have been asked as classroom teachers to take an introspective look at our own teaching practices and values. I now ask the board to do the same. If Evergreen is to stay a top-rated district, not just in Vancouver, not just in Washington, but nationally, we cannot just give lip service to equity and restorative practices. When we think about priorities for the budget, I appeal to you to think about our most underserved students and what does true equity in the classroom look like. Equity is not classrooms designed for 25, maxed out to 33. Equity is not a limited number of elective options because of staff reductions. Equity is not removing the most consistent faith in some of our students' hectic lives. I ask the board to consider how we can continue to claim we stand for restorative justice and equity while cutting vital support for our most disenfranchised students. Equity starts with the highest quality educators in the classroom for students. If our priority is to create an equitable learning environment for all our students, we cannot afford for world-class teachers to be removed from the classroom as they won't stick around for when we need them again. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. All right, is there anyone else? We only have the three folks that signed up. Is there anybody else that wants to address the board that did not have a chance to sign up on the sheet? Okay, seeing no one else, I just wanna remind everyone too that during citizen comments, the board's not allowed to respond directly since it wasn't on our agenda, but hopefully we'll have a chance to have somebody follow up with you. All right, so at this time, the, we're gonna call for recess where we're gonna sign some papers, and then we will reconvene in a board workshop that will happen right back in this room. At the workshop, we're going to do a six-year capital facilities plan, discuss impact fees, update, we're gonna get a budget development update, legislative update, another superintendent's update, and then we'll have a board meeting debrief. And then, at that time, we will go into executive session to review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.